All right. Welcome, everybody. We're all dry, thankfully, hopefully. Welcome to the November 18th School Board Regular Meeting. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ms. Jones, can you please go ahead and do a roll call?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Silverman?
Here.
Ms. Tice?
Thank you. Ms. Jones, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. All right. And now we're at 1.04. Let's go do a motion for adoption of the agenda. Vice Chair Tice.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Second, thank you, Ms. Silverman. All in favor say yes. Any opposed? All right. We are ready to begin. We are looking forward to tonight. We've got a great crowd, and we are looking forward to hearing from our exceptional students. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Dade to kick it off for sustainability.
All right. Thank you. So, we are thrilled, as Chair Gould said, to hear our first student spotlight of the year since my arrival. So, equally is thrilled. I think we almost have a classroom full of students here to share with us this evening. So, I'm going to turn it over to their capable hands to hear about our Meridian High School Sustainability in Action Program.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tosin Adetoro. I am the Sustainability Coordinator at Meridian High School, and I'm here with my Sustainability and Renewable Technologies class to present some information that they've been working on. The presentation is broken up into three parts. The first part will describe sustainability in action at Meridian High School. The second part will explain the work that the class has done in class and during lunch. And the third part will be a huge student request to the board. Oh, it's working. Thank you. I just wanted to do a quick thank you and show you our teacher team because a lot of what we do at Meridian High School can't be done without the teachers that you see on the screen. And now, I'm going to turn it over to my students.
My name is Paul, and I'm a ninth grader at Meridian. As a new student at the high school, I've appreciated the opportunities to serve my community. A sustainability program is a natural and powerful complement to our IB learner profile, especially given the IB's mission in learner profile, as well as its emphasis on global engagement, responsible action, and connection between our classes.
Hello, School Board. My name is Jack, and I'm a ninth grader here at Meridian. Now, I'm going to talk to you today about these 17 icons. Now, they all represent the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, which are a shared blueprint for making the world more sustainable, fair, and resilient by the year 2030. Here at Meridian, our waste program connects directly to these goals, especially Goal 12, which is responsible consumption and production, and Goal 13, which is climate change. But all of them remind us that sustainability isn't just about cycling, but also about balance as well. Now, there are three pillars of sustainability here: the environmental pillar, the social pillar, and the economic pillar. They all show how every action we take needs to protect our planet, support our people, and make sense for our community's future. Now, our school efforts are a small but very important part of this global movement, and they show that students can lead meaningful change right here at home.
Hello, School Board. My name's Nick, and I'm a senior here at Meridian High School. This slide shows us how sustainability is woven throughout our school community under one umbrella of action. On the left, academics, like environmental science, design, and business, connect learning to the 17 UN Sustainable Development Goals. In the center, enrichment clubs, such as the Environmental Club, the Bike Club, and the Robotics Club, give students a hands-on way to apply those goals through real-world projects and design challenges. And on the right, we see service programs like NHS and Sustainability in Action that use platforms like Interview for students to track and reflect on their actions beyond the classroom. Together, this umbrella shows how Meridian integrates sustainability into learning, leadership, and service, preparing students to take on real-world action beyond the classroom. This slide are just some pictures of our processes with addressing waste at our school. My classmates are going to break down our findings furthermore on further slides. Thank you.
Hello, School Board. Thank you for having us here. My name is Miglio. I am the Senior Project Lead on the Better at the Bin Project. And in the coming slide, all the students here in the Sustainability's class will dive deeper into waste management at Meridian High School and our vision to facilitate a closed-loop waste system and a waste reduction plan at our school.
Hello, School Board. My name is Kiran, and I'm in ninth grade. I hear some facts about waste reduction. Falls Church has a 20-year waste plan aiming for 2040. FCCPS makes 90 tons of waste per year on average. Upper campus cafeteria waste is the biggest contributor to the landfill, about 70 percent, and cardboard is the only material consistently recycled. Waste reduction matters for us at Meridian because it keeps our area and environment and Falls Church healthy and clean. Our focus is on reducing waste before it's created, disposals a last resort.
My name is Noel, and I'm in ninth grade, and I'm a part of the class. Since we've discussed why waste reduction matters at Meridian, I'm going to explain how this connects to our Sustainability Class goal. So, our STEM class conducted a waste audit to identify the types and quantities of waste generated during all lunch periods. We discovered that around 70 percent of Meridian's waste comes from our cafeteria, and to combat this, our class proposed a permanent three bin system consisting of compost, recycling, and landfill. First, our class helped sort the bins and educated students on how to sort their waste properly. Secondly, our class weighed all the waste after the lunch blocks, and for our final step, we sorted our trash into the final bins. Examples of compost is food scraps and paper. For recycling, it's plastic bottles and cans, and for landfill, it's everything else.
My name is Emily, and I'm a senior. As part of our project, we wanted to look into student opinion and how effective the bins actually are in changing sorting behavior. One of the ways we've done this is through student interviews, as shown in this video. One of the things we discovered was that students are still adjusting to the new bins, but because they think they're making a difference, they're happy to take part in it. Due to our time constraints, we won't be showing the video, but is linked to the slides for future reference if needed. Next slide. Another way we investigated student opinion was through this survey, which was sent out to our stable groups. When asked about their sorting habits before Better at the Bin, only 40 percent had strong sorting habits, and more than a third of students barely paid any attention at all. This is in the one and two band shown on the graph. On the contrary, after implementing the new bins, only 3 percent don't pay attention, and approximately 85 percent of students now say that they're intentional about sorting. This 109 percent increase is very promising data.
My name is Fiona, and I'm in 11th grade. And these are some of the other questions that we asked, and the students' responses showed that most students are actually highly intentional about sorting their trash, but it just hasn't become a habit yet. And we can combat this by getting younger grades more involved. And we can also see that students think seeing results would further motivate them, and we can address this by getting them involved and giving them small roles to help them see a difference and become more motivated.
My name's Mathias. I'm a ninth grader, and I'll be talking about the quantitative data we observed during the project. During the project, we collected a lot of data, but the quantitative data proved to be most beneficial on how to take next steps. First, it's important to notice our data was measured by weight and not by items. We measured the separate categories: trash, compost, and all plastics. Trash and plastic both make up around 25 percent of the total weight, with compost accounting for 50 percent of the total weight. As seen in the chart, three-fourths of the weight measured should be and can be measured in a different way. Paul will talk more about this in the next slide.
My name is Paul, and I'm a ninth grader at Meridian. So, this data talks about the materials that can be circled back into our school. So, around two-thirds of that is compost, which we can be used for vivariums in our garden outside, while the average plastic is containers, lids, and forks that are made from our school cafeteria. So, which that can be used for precious plastics, a group that recycles plastics and uses them for injection molding. Liam will touch on it some more.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Liam. I'm a senior here. One of the biggest things we looked at was the share of plastic waste. All of this can be and should be disposed of differently if we want to reach that zero-waste goal. And so, a third of this is plastic waste here at our school. And on the next slide, we see how we kind of dove into that share of plastic waste. So, that darker green slice of the pie you see is all plastic trays that we get from cafeteria waste each day. That lighter green piece is the rest of plastic waste, being bottle caps, plastic bottles, stuff like that. So, we see this big share of our plastic waste being these plastic trays that we're serving our food in lunch. And Nick touched on how we have programs like precious plastics that can upcycle these plastic bits, but in the future, we'd like to do a deeper dive in analyzing how we can get rid of this plastic waste, reduce this plastic waste in the future.
Hello, School Board. My name is Max Fry. I'm a freshman at Meridian High School. This is a picture of what a plastic tray looks like. The weight of a plastic tray is approximately 0.09 pounds. The total amount of plastic trays collected over the six days is 1,109 plastic trays. Our quantitative data is focused on weight. However, we wanted to highlight the large number of containers collected over the six days. Next slide, please.
Hi. My name is Greta. I'm in 11th grade, and during our data analysis, we gathered information on the school's waste contractors. The number on the side reflect the secondary campus, so we estimated Meridian's share at roughly half. There's about 24 65-gram bins and 1/8 cubic yards dumpster. From our previous data, our class concluded that having a year-long Better at the Bin program will shift more waste from trash to recycling and compost. Focusing on the cafeteria could create cost savings, especially with appropriately sized containers while supporting Meridian's sustainability goals.
My name is Maya. I'm in ninth grade, and I'm going to be talking about the analysis and measurable impact of Better at the Bin this year. Our data focuses on the collection period because we know that the impact of our ambassadors was really important. Before this initiative, all the waste our school produced was sent to incinerators. During the collection period, which was six days, we were able to divert 112 pounds of plastic just from the cafeteria to recycling facilities. And excluding our class, we had 18 students that were trained as ambassadors to direct the sorting of waste during lunches. During the collection period, we were able to increase recycling in our cafeteria by 73.8 percent, which includes all plastics and organic waste.
So, as we finish up the presentation, I want to focus on the quote that's in the top-left corner. "Small actions when multiplied by many can transform our community." For us, small sustainable actions throughout the school is setting the stage for a closed-loop grassroots initiative through MHS that can transform a community. We have a lot of meaningful, yet scattered, engagement throughout the school. These efforts, when united under a district plan for sustainability, can enable Meridian High School to become a model of sustainability for the entire district. With that, we, the students of the Meridian High School Sustainability Class, would like the School Board and the district to include a sustainability goal in the next version of the district strategic plan. School Board, we want to start the conversation around sustainability. Students are ready to lead. We just need your system-level partnership and commitment. Thank you, guys.
So, the students wanted to make sure that they thanked a lot of staff members that came together and collaborated on this project. As you can tell, they were very intentional about the collaboration, and they kind of posed a question to you guys to continue that collaboration with the School Board. Thank you so much, and now you can ask the students questions.
Thank you, Ms. Adetoro. Thank you all. Yes. Very good. It is quite impressive to see what you all have done, and we appreciate all the time, not just for this presentation, but obviously for all the work that you're doing. I've been on the board for four years. We have always talked about recycling in the high school. We've always talked about trying to do a better job of recycling, and every single time, the adults are saying, "Well, it's just too hard. You just can't get change in student behavior." Clearly, you all have proved us all wrong, and as much as we'd like to sit up here and be the leaders of the district, it's humbling to know that you all are leading us in this area, and I think your call to action is important. And I know we're going to have questions for you. I already have a few, but really, it's really impressive what you all have done, and it's exciting to see, to see that you guys have changed culture in our schools, and it can be done. So, I really, hats off to all of you. And Ms. Adetoro, again, working your magic. I know you don't like to hear that, but we really appreciate your leadership with all you do in terms of pushing action with our students and inspiring. So, one of the things I was curious about, Amiglio, you talked about Better at the Bin, and anyone can answer this, but if a student, yeah, that'd be great if you could. Can you talk about that culture change? All we ever hear about is, "Well, you're going to have to get students to not do this when they get to the trash," and they're... How did that happen? How did you get that much of a change? That's impressive.
Well, it was a very long process. I think, for the most part, the bins did most of it for us. We focused on outreach, trying to get more volunteers involved as we set up a date, so kind of marketing to the school, if you will. But once the bins were there, and we had students behind it, which I think was the main thing, all the students here helped out. Students were able to take the extra second, step back, see the labels, and recycle. So, it was really the students here, all the people that volunteered, and the design work that we did to put into building it, setting up a strong way for wayfinding in the cafeteria for the waste.
And you felt like, just being there, the presence just really changed the culture pretty quickly?
Yeah. Presence is the main thing. We're still continuing on trying to get more ambassadors throughout the day, and there's a couple of things with, like, catch-up packets, for example, that there's definitely a room for improvement. So, there's little things on, like, actually organizing to the full extent that it should be, but we're on a really good track right now, so.
That's great. No, I appreciate that. That's impressive. And the amount of waste, I know, Kiran, you mentioned that. That is scary to know that how much that is going out on that. Emily, you mentioned about your survey results about student opinion and survey. Can you talk a little bit about what you... That was a significant change in student understanding. You know, you mentioned going from 40-something percent to 80-something percent about awareness. What was some of the qualitative understanding you got from that? Is that from the students that were standing there? Like, what else did you do to kind of shift that culture, do you think, in the school?
I think before we had these new bins, everyone was sort of, at least with my friends, we sort of saw that there was only two types of bins, and we were all very confused on where we were supposed to put trashware. And these new bins just being very clear with, like, the signage, and I think we talk about it with our friends, too. So, just knowing that we're actually making a difference helps motivate the students in participating.
And do you think it's just really that is all needed? Do you have to do any, like, school-wide communication, or do you feel like that was enough to really shift to get to that 80 percent of awareness? Like, if another school was trying to copy what you all did, is that really the effort where they should put their effort, is just to really get at the bin and communicate to students?
Yeah. I think the new design was super helpful, but I think if we think at, like, middle school or, like, younger grade levels, I think the classes can help explain the new model, and then if they learn at a younger age, too, it'd be easier now. It'd be already a habit, so it'd be less of a challenge that way, too.
That's... Yeah, that is true. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to support Emily a little bit. Don't go anywhere. The other piece that Sustainability in Action adds to this is the service learning hours that students get for composting and sorting their waste. So, Interview is our platform that allows students to log in hours for volunteering at the bins, so that's another way that we've been able to get them to support the programming, and they collect a certain amount of hours for the year, and they get a national service award for that.
Oh, wow.
So, that's a piece that we've added in with Sustainability in Action. So, that's another push for students.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Emily. And then the last question, you're wondering who I'm going to put on next. Jack, you're up. Jack, you mentioned about what sustainability is, and it looked like sustainability clearly from my ignorance about this, I thought it was just about the environment, but what you presented on is sustainability is defined by a significant number of aspects. You talked, it looked like, I think you said poverty, justice, understanding, collaborative within a community. Can you talk a little bit about how did that get so broad in terms of sustainability?
So, like, how we selected, like, through all those icons, like, which ones?
Yeah, exactly. And, yeah.
Well, we just chose, like, which ones best fit for our school and how those connect to, like, the actions we take and how we can, like, improve our waste production and consumption in Meridian. So, we just kind of selectively chose based off of that and how it just affects, like, our community in Meridian, too.
That's great. Yeah, because I did not realize sustainability was that broad, how you presented it. There's a lot of different aspects of that. You talked about, yeah, poverty and justice was, I think, one of the first ones, or ending hunger and things like that. So, it's, yeah, it's really impressive. So, okay. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to open it up. Yep, I know there's hands. Ms. Tice.
Yes. Thank you so much for this presentation and for all of your really important work. I just want to make sure that we take an extra moment to thank all the teachers and the staff and the parent volunteers that I know that have supported your excellent work. I was fortunate enough to come visit one of your club meetings, and it was really impressive to see how well organized you were, how committed you were to the cause. The collaboration between you all was really, really impressive, and the work that you're doing here is really just a model. I hope that the community sees this. I hope younger students see this and see the impact that they can make while they're still in our school system, that you don't have to wait until after you've graduated to really make a difference in your community. I also would be curious, with the Better at the Bin program, I know this data collection was for six days, but is the sorting, is the goal of the sorting that it will happen the whole year? Because I'll ask Miglio, since he's stand-up. Yeah, sure.
The sorting is for the intended use of the whole year, and with the discussion of continuing it past graduation. So, a lot of these students are a lot younger than I am, and a lot of them have a lot of interests. So, it's something that I'm planning to have, like, a system-level integration into the schools. I don't think it should be something we revert back to, especially with the push that we're getting with student engagement. To drop that off, it's going to take a lot of extra steps to get back to it. So, yes, I plan for it to be something that continues at the high school with you guys, helping and communicating on that, and possibly even expanding throughout the district, so.
And will those bins be manned? Like, are there volunteers at the bins every day, not just during that data collection, right? Yes, that's fantastic. And I really want to highlight, what I think is special, is the commitment to this not just being just for a project, or just for a grade, or just for a college application or something. There's a true commitment to making sure that this project of sustainability is sustainable also, and so I really want to applaud how cross-grade this project is and how many of you are contributing to make sure that this isn't just, you know, a flash-in-the-pan sort of experience. And I just want to encourage all of you to continue to hold us accountable. This is exactly what we are elected to do, is to sit here and learn from our community and take requests like this, and make sure that we are being responsible stewards of our district. So, I encourage you to continue to hold us accountable and stay in communication with us, and I really appreciate all of your time and effort.
Thanks, Ms. Tice. Other questions, comments from the board? Ms. Henderson.
Good evening. Thank you, guys. This is awesome. I love seeing service learning in action in academics and otherwise, and y'all are a wonderful example of it. At the end, y'all left us a really big challenge, which was to put a sustainability goal in the next version of the district strategic plan. So, if you were in our seats and could write that goal, what would it be?
So, I made some bit of a list, answering that exact question.
I think we kind of guessed you did, so, yeah.
Thank you for the question. So, the next steps to put in the strategic plan are, first, collaborating with you guys on creating a sustainability goal, and that includes the district stakeholders, like VEPIS, some of the people up here, and student reps like myself and some of the students here. Another thing, Liam touched on it, is looking into alternative materials for lunches. There's a lot of containers going to waste, and the precious plastics does take a good amount of that waste, upcycles it and puts it into repurposed items, like plant pots, chess pieces, and whatnot, but I don't think that is, in terms of sustainability, like, very sustainable. So, looking into alternative materials for lunches, and I think the main thing is focusing on the custodial staff. We don't have custodial staff out there serving out the food. That's why we have the containers and the amount of excess waste. And then, as I brought up before, expanding the bins across the district campuses. And then, the last thing that I kind of think of is setting up an ad hoc committee, which I know I talked to Ms. Tice about, where student reps, members from VEPIS, I know have interest in it, where the collaboration can actually happen, and monitoring of implementing a real plan or a system into the school can take place.
Great. No, thanks. Yeah, I know you've reached out a few times about this, and that's, yeah, I think you've got all the decision-makers in this room right now paying attention, and so, well-done on the articulation of what can be done.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so that's great. Great job, Miglio. Yeah. All right. I think if, I think we, one more hand for this impressive group, so, yes. Thank you again for taking the time and educating us, and really, so we can follow in your footsteps on this. So, really appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Adetoro. So, thank you. They are... Yeah, can we do a picture by chance with the team in red? Yes. You don't care?
I said we should stay up here.
Yeah.
Because they're so... They're going in there.
Have we got a line?
I think Paul should be... [laughter] Thank you so much. [applause] We have buttons for you.
You can't get away from the buttons. All right. We appreciate everybody. That was an excellent presentation, and that was humbling, but also exciting and good call to action. So, I think we've got a lot to think about up here and as a group, so let's see what we can do. So, all right. Thank you, Dr. Dade, for a great, that was a very impressive student presentation to start, so, yeah. All right. We'll move on to Section 3.01. I'm going to go ahead and read this out, and then we're going to hear from Ms. Sherwood about this. This is about the public hearing for naming of Meridian High School Bandroom. In accordance with School Board Policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record, be disposition of requests. Ms. Jones, do we have any public comments about the renaming, which we shouldn't?
We do not.
Okay. And we don't because, Ms. Sherwood?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Gould. So, although our policy requires that we have an opportunity for public comments tonight, we have planned for our speakers to come. Our next...
This is about the public hearing for naming of Meridian High School band room. In accordance with school board policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record, be disposition of requests. Ms. Jones, do we have any public comments about the renaming, which we shouldn't?
We do not.
Okay. And we don't because Ms. Sherwood?
Yes, thank you Chair Gold. So although our policy requires that we have an opportunity for public comments tonight, we have planned for our speakers to come at our next meeting on December 9th, our next regular school board meeting, where we're going to take the opportunity to properly honor Ms. West with the naming of the band room. And we'll have a resolution that we will present at that time and a number of speakers who are going to speak in her honor. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. And Ms. West will be in attendance, correct? Yes. That'll be, that's the, that's the goal. All right. That'll be exciting. So yeah, after 29 dedicated years in Falls Church City, we are looking forward to that. So, all right. All right, we'll keep moving. Public comments 4.01. We are going to, "Public in accordance with school board policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record, be disposition of requests." Ms. Jones, do we have any written comments, public comments?
We have no written public comments.
Okay. And how many, we have one notice for in-person public comment?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And we're going to call on Mr. John Ward. Mr. Ward, if you, if you don't mind stating your name and your address, thanks for coming.
Gabe, John Ward, 335 Riley Street. I used to be, served several years on the Environmental Sustainability Council. I definitely advocate for adopting a sustainability element within the strategic plan. My comments tonight are on behalf of the Board of the Falls Church Climate Action Network. I'm here to recommend two actions by the school board and they are related to each other. I'll follow this up with a text version later on. You'll soon be setting the budget for FY 2027. The capital improvements program, the CIP, calls for refurbishing the roof surface of the middle school in fiscal year 2029 with an estimate of about a million dollars. The CIP also says that the city and FCCPS will consider approaches for installing solar panels on the roof of MEH after it's refurbished. Putting solar panels on school and government buildings is also part of the Government Operations Energy Action Plan. So that was always a 2029 sort of issue for, for you and for the, the city. Earlier this year, however, the tax law has changed at the federal level. The 30% federal rebate for solar panels now expires in about two years, in December of 2027. And it seems to us that acting soon to take advantage of the 30% federal rebate will easily justify refurbishing the roof a year or two early. So contracting for solar on government and school roofs is now suddenly an FY 2027 budget decision. Now, the school board and the city council can keep those as two separate decisions. Yes, we're definitely going to draw down a million dollars from capital reserves and refurbish the roof and then we'll separately decide how we want to finance investments in solar. However, there are ways to integrate the roof refurbishment with the solar panels so that some or all of the roof refurbishment costs may qualify also for the 30% federal tax rebate. So if it's a half a million dollars worth of the roof where it qualifies for that, looking at $150,000 sort of extra rebate savings to the school system and to the city. The catch, as I've said, is that all this work has to be completed by the end of December 2027, which is halfway into FY 28. So again, this is why this is sort of an FY 27 decision. The capital reserves required by these integrated roof plus solar approaches could range anywhere from zero to one and a half, 1.7 million dollars, depending on how the financing is arranged, whether it's a direct purchase or through a power purchase agreement with a third party, as was done for the high school. So our two recommendations are, one, this, for the board, discuss with the government side, the benefits of accelerating the work on the middle school roof and the availability of capital reserves in FY 27 if they are needed. Two, in parallel, ask the FCCPS facility staff to assess for you the integrated approaches, roof plus solar, and present you with the options and plenty of time to make decisions for the FY 27 budget. And you all would know best what that deadline is, but maybe it's the end of December, since the budget is coming up quickly. These integrated roof plus solar approaches have worked at other schools in Virginia, but the devil's in the details when assessing the cost for FCCPS roofs. The Falls Church Climate Action Network stands ready and available to help the schools and the government in this process as you implement this and other parts of the Government Operations Interjection Plan. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. We appreciate that and your timing for comments about the budget as well as timing for hearing our students and what they're doing. Couldn't have been better. So thanks for, thanks for joining us tonight. Appreciate, Mr. Ward. All right. And if, Mr. Ward, if you don't mind sending an email of some of that, that'd be great, just to make sure I was trying to write it down, but that'd be great. Thank you. All right. That concludes our public comments and request section. Now we're going on to business action and information. We're going to start off with enrollment projection presentation. Dr. Dade, any intros on this?
Ms. Prince is going to key us, tee us up.
All right, Ms. Prince.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to present this evening. Tonight, we're sharing our annual enrollment overview and projections as we prepare for the FY 27 budget process. This presentation provides the latest data on where our student enrollment stands, trends, and what we should anticipate over the next year. To begin, it's important to understand how enrollment projections work. These are informed estimates of our future student population based on current trends, demographic data, housing development, and previous enrollment patterns. We always note that the more specific the area or the further out we look, the greater the uncertainty in this process. Division-wide, one-year projections are generally accurate. School-level and multi-year forecasts naturally carry more variability and our special guest this evening, Dr. Keith Waters, will talk through that more. Before we get started, I do want to introduce Dr. Keith Waters, the Stephen Fuller Institute and the work that they have partnered with us to do. They are a critical input to our forecasting work and the partnership that we have with the Stephen S. Fuller Institute at George Mason University. The Fuller Institute has been a leading source of regional economic analysis for more than 30 years. The research ranging from short-term economic shifts to long-ranging forecasts helps local government, school systems, and businesses make informed decisions. This evening, we're joined by Dr. Keith Waters, who brings deep regional expertise in economic development, housing, labor markets, and demographic trends. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Waters to share his insights on the regional context and what it means for our enrollment outlook for school year 26, 27. Thank you, Dr. Waters.
You can stand there, yeah. Just make sure the button's on. Welcome back, Dr. Waters. Always good to engage with you on this topic.
Yeah, thanks for having me back. Is this on? Can you hear me? It was a little more exciting to come back last year since I got a little closer than this year. So, but that being said, this is, I think, more important than I come back this year, given the state of what's going on. And so for that reason, this year's forecast is going to be a little different and we're actually going to start with a pretty broad overview of the region, which I think is probably the most important context, basically just putting the school enrollment projections into context. So we're going to, we're going to start by looking back and then we'll look forward, okay? Because I think actually it's really important for us to have a level of understanding or at least I can share with you my understanding of what's happening in the region. And so for this region, for this region, I'm going to, I'm going to start with saying this is where I think we are and this is why I think we're headed where we are. And so it's going to, it'll, it'll take a little bit. So just prepare yourself and it's not all super positive. Looking at neighboring jurisdictions, Arlington County, they are 809, or they were 809 students below their forecast. They actually lost students between September 2024 and September 2025. Fairfax County was down more than 4,000 students and specifically they noted immigration policy as a potential reason for the loss of students. Montgomery County, north of the Potomac Ocean, is down 2,600 students between 2025, or 2024 and 2025. They also noted that international enrollments were down sharply and they predict 6,000 student loss over the next six years. They reached a peak of 165,000 in 2019 and they predict that this will go down to about 150,000 students in the coming years. So last year I had predicted we would end up at 200, 2,873. We came in at 2,712, so I missed by about 150 students. And we will discuss moving, so one, we actually had an increase in student enrollment in Falls Church between last year and this year, was up 11 students. But that being said, there seems to be air coming out of the entire region's economy. And so we're going to walk through the regions, basically the economic data that we have and just kind of share with you my view of the world, which isn't super positive. The bars that I want you to draw your attention to are those bright green bars. That's net international migration into the entire DC region. In 2014, from 2014 to 2015, we had about 47,000 international in migrants and about 40,000 between 2015 and 2016. Over the course of the first Trump administration, this fell to about 23,895, about 24,000 net international in migrants. And then we had the pandemic year where this really pulled back. Okay? But what you'll notice is we had a really, you know, it was a relatively gradual drawdown of net international migration as the Trump policies, you know, basically started to bite and then worked their way through the systems, but it was relatively gradual. Following this, we had the Biden-era policies, which expanded international migration and it immediately bounced back. So we were pulling in about 70,000 to 83,000 international migrants into the region for the last three years. I fully anticipate that this number is going to contract much sharper than last time and potentially already has. The immigration rhetoric was a lot stronger and a lot faster. Obviously, you all have seen the news with, with the ICE agents wandering around and this is part of the reason why Fairfax and Montgomery noted both the loss of international enrollments. So we're pulling population, we're, we're, the way that I want to say it is that we're experiencing less population pressures regionally. Okay? The second bars that I want to draw your attention to, and I do believe this came up last, last year, is the light blue bars, which are a little harder to see, but what you'll notice about the light blue bars is they go from positive to negative from basically the 2010 to the 2014 period. So in the early years, and this, so this is net domestic migration. So these are the folks coming to the Washington region from other parts of the country. Okay? That fell negative from 2010 to about 2014, effectively, as I would argue, because of the Budget Control Act and sequester. If you can remember back that far, we've been bumbling in and out of recessions as a region since effectively the Budget Control Act and sequester. We are so dependent on the federal government that when they decided to stop spending so much money, population pressure was a little bit lower region-wide. And so when you have the pandemic happen, people who didn't necessarily have to be here left the region for more space, you know, because they could, they could work from home and you could have a bigger house, you know, your, your kid could have a bigger yard. And if so, if you didn't have to live in a multifamily unit, you maybe chose not to. That has since pared back. Net domestic migration into the region as a whole between 2013 and 2014 was about 23,000, so the outmigration has, has slowed. But for the last few years, the net domestic outmigration problems and sort of our, I would, I would argue middling economy, were sort of meandering toward moderate, like, you know, we're meandering towards mediocrity regionally, was masked by a lot of international migration. So this is the, this is the first kind of pressure release valve into the region, which I actually think have probably shown up first in the student enrollment numbers. The second thing we're going to talk about is federal job losses. I think my clicker might have stopped working. Oh, maybe I turned it off. Maybe I didn't click fast enough. Can you just hit next slide? Oh, there we go. Maybe it fell asleep. Federal job losses in the DC metro. We were at a peak of 380,000 federal jobs in December 2024 and despite kind of political rhetoric moving into the campaign and, you know, nationally it was reasonably popular to say we do want to reduce the, the budget deficit, in the federal budget deficit, I don't think anybody quite anticipated the scope and scale of the federal layoffs. We fell from the peak of 380 down to 353,000 federal employees in August of 2025. That number undoubtedly fell further in September 2025. Those data were to be released in late October. The federal government was shut down, so I do not know how many employees we were down in September. And that was also before the, the folks who took the deferred retirement, colloquially known as the, the fork in the road, they came off payroll October 1st. So we would have been collecting data about how many people came off federal payroll in October, and this gets really into the data nerd weeds, but the government was shut down for all of October. That is the first time that has ever happened, so the BLS was not collecting data for an entire month. This has not happened before, which means we will unlikely to get a regional sense of how many people came off federal payroll until late December. This is going to be the worst holiday present I can think of as a data nerd. But nonetheless, we don't really know the extent to which we've dropped. The last number that we knew was this August 2023 number. To put this into context, this is the same number of federal employees we had in the region in 2009. That's a, that we've lost 15 years of job growth at the federal level and, and undoubtedly more, and we don't know to what extent. The second, the second bit is professional, scientific, and technical job losses in the entire DC metro. This has been, the job growth slowed in late 2023. If you look at the green bars, those are the most important ones. Those are professional, scientific, and technical. Those are going to be your federal contractors, lawyers, architects, engineers. These are the ones making 100, 150, $200,000 that support the high housing costs around here. Regionally, those started to slow in late 2023 and went negative in 2024. Last year, when I came, it had, it had started to turn positive. So if you look at the end of 2024, we started adding jobs again. Regionally, Northern Virginia didn't start slowing until this year. So if we look more narrowly at Northern Virginia, that held up a lot better, but immediately with the switch of the administration, we started losing professional, scientific, and technical jobs. Okay? So three of the major reasons to be in the area, which are kind of this cosmopolitan area for a federal job or a federal contracting job, are no longer a wind at our back. They're, they're quickly become a headwind. Okay? So looking at total job law, or total job growth in the DC metro, it turned from nega, turned from positive job growth to, to negative over the summer. And again, we only have data through August and we will find out, you know, kind of how much it has continued to drop in the coming months. But broadly, the point is, is that the whole region's economy has effectively stalled and is likely contracting. To what extent this is happening, it's pretty unclear. The best data that we have, the most, I would say, robust, consistent, and timely are going to be housing data and all of the housing data that I'm looking at are showing a softening of the region's housing market. So if we look at for-sale inventory in Falls Church, this is end-of-month inventory. This is like if you're perusing Zillow on the last day of the month, this is how many options that you would have. There were four options for townhomes, nine options for detached, and then 34 for condos. immediately after the election. So on October 2024, there were three condos. So on October 2024, there were three condos for sale, and then this jumped up to 23 or so in November. So this is people likely who, I was talking to somebody recently who sold their condo two months ago, and they used it as effectively a pied-à-terre where they lived in another part of the state. They came in and used it once a month to go to various business in DC, but they recently just sold it. So we are seeing inventory building, which is to say, things are sitting on the market a little longer. Importantly, Falls Church continues to be one of the most desirable communities in the DC metro. And I am not pandering to the crowd. I know there's people from city council here as well, in large part because of how good the school system is. And people pay extra to live in Falls Church. The housing prices have continued to hold up. If you squint hard enough and stare at it long enough, like I have, you can kind of potentially convince yourself that there might be a softening in condos and co-ops over the last few months. That's the yellow bar at the bottom. The dark bar, which is attached homes that grew through, through summer, it has a sort of cyclical low. I've left the bounciness of this. So this is the median sales price. I've left the bounciness because it's, it's a relatively few number. This is what in statistics we would call not robust at all, but I've tried to just leave it as, as plain as I can. It's really bouncy because there just aren't that many sales, but nonetheless, it's not like home sales are falling off a cliff. People still want to live in Falls Church at the moment, and same with townhomes. That being said, I've seen some work recently coming out of Bright MLS that has shown that DC, that inventory in the DC metro as a whole is increasing faster than in the mid-Atlantic, which is likely the result of the federal administration's policies. And I'm very curious, I'm mostly curious to see how this plays out in the spring when we enter the typical selling season. If we look at multifamily, so this is multifamily stabilized vacancy. This excludes the stuff that just came online. Stabilized buildings are those with either 90% occupancy or have been on the market for 18 months. We have seen stabilized vacancies start to climb. It's not spiking, but it is going up. Okay. So this excludes the stuff that just came online. This is, you know, this is stuff that has been around for, for, you know, 10, 15 years. It is starting to climb. So both the most current and robust data sets that we have are showing weakness in the region's economy, and it is showing up in Falls Church. This is actually, this is also for Falls Church, not the region. Okay. So with that as a backdrop. Just falls asleep, I guess. I have a tendency to drone, so I think I'm putting it to sleep. What I will say, if we look back over a really long period of time, enrollment in Falls Church has generally gone one way. It's like the stock market. If you stare at, you know, and I, if you stare at a day, there's always going to be variations, but when you look at it historically, it's been pretty steady growth going back to 1985. So over 40-year period, just generally has continued to rise. Like I said, it's a very desirable place to live. It got a little, you know, maybe potentially overcrowded. We can discuss that in, in the 2015, 2018 period. Post-COVID had a little bit of a dip, but then bounced back and was effectively flat between last year and this year, up just a touch. If we look at monthly enrollment, and I'm going to hang on this one for just a little bit. Falls Church actually set an enrollment record in March of this year. In March of 2025, the monthly enrollment was 2,753. That has, that, at least with the monthly enrollment, that is, that is a record enrollment for the city of Falls Church. That is effectively when Doge was happening. Okay. So we hit a record right when Doge got really going. And thereafter, we fell down to the current, the October 30th number was 2,712. Okay. So we lost about 40 students between March and October. There's a bunch of different ways I could bore you to sleep, but two things that I want to point out is that it is typically the case, or at least over like in just looking at the post-COVID period, that Falls Church adds somewhere between 15 and 40 students between the start of the year and the end of the year. So it's not unusual to add 35 students. It's pretty normal, actually. What's even more interesting is if you, or from my perspective, what I find more interesting is over the last few years, in 2022, there was a drop of age students between the end of the year, between sort of June, June 6 or whatever it is that year. In September, you typically add students over the summer, which is really, for me, pretty intuitive. You get some churning, people sell their house, they decide to move to Florida or whatever it is, somebody else moves in, they got kids. Between, in 2023, over 2023 and over 2024, you added 66 and 54 kids. If you take an average of that, you just use 60. If you add 60 students to the June number, not even to the peak number, but just to the June number, you effectively add, you end up at eight, 2,800 students, 2,799 students, which is to say, the drop that we've experienced since March is pretty unusual. And I personally attribute it directly to the federal policies, immigration, federal employment and federal contracting. And I, the one other thing I want to say, and you guys can take this however you, however you would like, is that the 20, the March number, the March 2025 number is effectively Weldon Cooper's projection last year. So we had already hit Weldon Cooper's projection for the start of this year in March. My projection was 2837. And so I came in below that, obviously, or I came in above this, but I was only off by seven, you know, we'll call it 75 kids, if we had even just continued on the trend and not, you know, effectively just like ignored the buildings that came online over the last year. Okay. So that's that. Just trying to give you my sense of why I missed. That's the, that's my best explanation for you all. Looking forward. The estimate changes, I'll say that my method has changed a little bit, just given the miss and the information that I have. It's pretty nuanced. We can get into it if you would like, but I would just like to point out that, you know, for the most part, the method is we estimate the number of housing units. This includes things that came online over the last year, the Alder, Madera Falls Church and the Oak. And then I estimate vacancy rates among the housing units. And then I estimate school enrollment from the households. Okay. So this is coming, these estimates, the, the broad point is the, these estimates are coming out of the number of households in Falls Church. The reason that I was brought in is because of the number of buildings that are coming on, or that came online are not incorporated into the Weldon Cooper projections. The Weldon Cooper projections are just school enrollment projections based on enrollment trends, under the assumptions that the trends will continue into the near future. The underlying trends that they focus on are grade progression ratios, which are just the number of kids who move up, you know, from seventh grade to eighth grade, eighth, nine, so on. And then they plop in some kids at the kindergarten level based on birth rates. I think these are fine. They were closer than mine this year. My personal opinion is that the, you know, Falls Church is a relatively small community housed within a much larger region. International migration and the churning is going to make a lot more of a difference than birth rates in Falls Church. That's just my opinion. Okay. So moving into the generation rates, these are, we'll call them a modified generation rates. I'd like to point out just a couple of things. Single family. So if we just look at the broad trends, single family generation rates had been trending back up. And so it had ticked up from 0.676 in 2022 up to 0.7 in 2024. The assumption last year was that it was going to continue to increase. Apartments and condos was roughly the same with the increase. You see the increase in that generation rate from 0.178 up to 0.202. That was, I assumed that was going to continue to increase. And particularly, I was concerned last year, and still am concerned this year, if I'm being perfectly honest with you, that it may trend back to those pre-COVID levels of 0.24, 0.237. These don't seem like a lot, but they, they actually can start to add up really quickly. Multiplication is a lot more powerful than my bank account would prefer to, to be. Townhomes have stayed relatively stable between 2024 and 2025, so there wasn't a ton of excitement in the townhomes. Most of what we saw, most of the action actually of what we saw was an increase in the number of total students coming out of apartments and condos and a slight decline in the, in the single family. So adding all this up, I'm still nervous that we could go back to pre-COVID generation rates. Not this year, probably, or you know, kind of not in the coming year, potentially not in 2027. It, for me, has become painfully obvious how interconnected our region is based on this particular project. We are very dependent on the federal government and whatever they decide over the coming times, I think is going to strongly influence these numbers. If you guys know what federal policy will be tomorrow, that'd be great. I would love to know. But I, I'm less concerned we're going to get back to this pre-COVID generation rates. I do still think all of the housing and the quality of your schools, and I will tell city council this in a month, or in a couple of weeks, eventually will fill back up, and I think we will get back to those numbers. It's just going to take a little bit longer than I anticipated. So I still predict that we are going to come in a little bit over the Weldon Cooper numbers. So I'm, between this year and next year, it's an increase of 33 students. Weldon Cooper has about 14. This is how it breaks down by grade. This is also a modified grade progression ratio. Basically, just because there's a couple of big classes that sort of snake through the system, and the one, one of them is in 12th grade, so they're about to leave. So, oh, and so, so for the moment, I'm only going to be giving a projection for next year because I'm actually, to be frank with you, sort of once bitten, twice shy. I, I did come in a little high last year, and because it's, the generation rates have gone down and back up, I'm hesitant to even give a, a estimate for 2027. And even before this, I'll say that I put out a monthly employment forecast in our monthly newsletter. I paused that in July because so much uncertainty had been building. So even before I knew the enrollment rates, I had basically stopped forecasting because there were so many known unknowns. So I'm going to end on some, I think I'm going the wrong way here. I'm going to end on a couple of caveats, and then I'll open it up for some questions. The federal government, the shutdown has resulted in a lack of timely data on the region's economy. I don't know how many and couldn't estimate how many workers took deferred retirement. I was planning on doing it because, well, we'll get national numbers on Thursday, which is also weird for people who pay attention to data. It's always Jobs Friday. But that's, so those data, the, the latest data that we have on that is August. Housing data are the most robust up to date. Both of those show a softening. Federal immigration policies likely are going to reduce upward pressure on enrollments. Inflation is still running above target, which I have a bunch of things that I could talk to you about. But the broadest point is, is that there's a lot of uncertainty, like known uncertainty in the system right now, and it's giving me pause. And so that is where I am at. And with that, I will open it up to questions. Thank you for listening. I know it's a long thing.
No, thank you, Dr. Waters. I know we've been anticipating your return and discussing this. Obviously, there's been a lot of, a lot of unknowns. Just take comfort in the fact that you're still better than a meteorologist, so you're good there. I think, I'm trying to think of, I had a couple of questions about some of your slides. One, I think you might have addressed it, but the condos, do you mind going back? I didn't have the slide number, unfortunately. I was wondering about the condos. I think it was the number 38 or 35. It looked like a huge jump. That is now, I think it was a vacancy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's for sale.
34, yeah. Does this control for the number of condos that are new and are for sale? Or is this, is this just condos that are now for sale that were pre-owned or that were owned and now being for sale? Because I know we've had a lot of condos opened up. So how does this control or for that?
The Oak, I believe, started selling, the Oak is the condo building that just opened up, and I believe that just went, those started selling in June. So I don't think, unless I'm wrong, and I'm now questioning myself, but I believe the Oak opened after these numbers jumped. So that jump is excluding all of that new stuff. And I believe also, no, this, I'm fairly certain on this, but this probably would not, I'd have to check, but I'm, I'm, I don't believe that these would have hit the MLS. This is just stuff that goes on the multiple listing service. So if the developer is selling them directly, it wouldn't be going through Realtor and then wouldn't end up on Bright MLS. So this would exclude the Oak.
Okay. No, that's, that's good clarification. And let me just make sure if I had another question, but I, I have to look at my notes. Other questions, comments from the board? Now that Dr. Waters is here. Mr. Anderson.
Yeah. So thanks for all the, all the information. I know it's, it's, you know, as a statistician myself, projection's hard. But I think I, I think I raised the issue last year, and it does still concern me and seems to concern you, is that we have a, a capacity for much more, in terms of the housing stock, for more students.
Yeah.
And so I'm curious as to, you know, what factors you think we should consider in terms of, you know, I mean, we, we have your, we have your estimate for what might, what might come along next year, but that is obviously going to be very sensitive to, you know, kind of the internal migration of the, of the, of the region. Because, you know, Falls Church is a, a, a good place to go for getting your kids in the schools. And so that still concerns me. And so, I mean, you know, how much, how much uncertainty are you putting around, around your, your projection?
I want to give you two answers. The first answer is 2,745. That's a joke. Okay. Just for the record. I mean, I don't, I think it's the same as last year, and I think this year it's even, it's, it's a little more balanced. Last year, I was concerned more about upside surprises. Last year I was concerned more about upside surprises, which is why I came in so much higher, is because I was concerned that we were going to return to this, we're barely above 2017 levels and we have had it added quite a bit of housing stock. It's really not hard to get back to really high numbers. It takes like almost restraint to stay low. Most of the churning is going to be in the apartment buildings. I still think there could be an upside risk. I kind of doubt there's going to be a downside risk. So the more, the actual serious answer is, you know, I would say plus or minus 45 students through the end of the year. Or I'm sorry, not plus or minus. Plus or minus 45 student, I mean, not even 45. I would say on the upside, and I hesitate to do this, but just try to give you a sense. I feel like it could go, I feel like the Weld and Cooper is a nice bottom and it could go, you know, I could comfortably say it would potentially hit like 280 by next year. The year after that, which is to say there's a little bit more asymmetry on the upside. I think we've potentially hit, like, we've hit peak Doge. Congress is probably going to act a little bit more sort of nuanced over the next year because they're going to start running for elections. So I don't, I think we've gone through most of the turmoil. Now we just have to let it play out. But, and the reason I bring that up is if there is churning in the housing market, if we do see for sale inventory and closed listings this spring start to tick up, I could see this going a number of ways. One, it could be the case that Falls Church is nice enough and expensive enough that it, it is more, you know, it's wealthier people potentially without kids or with fewer kids who buy the homes here. Alternatively, if you get enough of a spike or the, you know, the inventory that comes on as condo, you know, if it's, if it's enough condos and people really do want to send their kids to the best schools, you could see a surge in kids. So this is why I'm like really hesitant to even do 2026, let alone out further. If that gives you, it's a pretty long-winded answer to say there's slightly more upside, but plus, plus or minus 30. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And another question, I know that, you know, I mean, Falls Church is small and so we don't have, you know, detailed annual data on demographics and whatnot, but I am, I am curious as, you know, kind of, the data that you have, is there, you know, kind of a change in demographics of the surrounding region? Kind of the age at which, you know, people are having kids, the age that they're, you know, just kind of like, are there more, say, single, single households, maybe dual, dual income, no kids? I'm just curious as to whether, you know, the, if there, if there's anything in the data there that we can say, oh, there, there might have been some demographic, demographic transition occurring.
So the short answer is yes. I just finished a housing study for Arlington, which is probably the most comparable jurisdiction to Falls Church. They have seen a rise in single-family households, so just one, one person living in it, often with no kids. So we have seen a rise in both sort of the dual income, no kids, also a rise in the single, the single population. Another one that I, that we were looking at for selfish reasons, so we're at George Mason and we were, you know, me and my boss were just pontificating one day and we were thinking about sort of the pool of students that we could draw. And what's kind of interesting is post-COVID, you saw a big drawdown in like the, the, you know, mid, late twenties population, right? And so, you know, for our purposes, we were like, well, these are typically the students who come and get a master's degree in their late twenties, early thirties. Those are also the people who have kids. So both of those would suggest fewer kids. And I have a, I had a third thing, but I've since forgotten it. So there are some demographic shifts away from childbearing age families in the DC metro as a whole, just because it's so expensive to live here. People with kids know how exhausting it is to try to make it to daycare and then get home and then, you know, and then your kid is screaming at you because you cut its banana in half or, you know, I don't know. I suspect some of you have had children. Anyway. Sorry to end with the banana.
Ms. Silverman.
Thank you for this presentation. I was really looking forward to it, just to kind of see where we, why we missed the mark. And then thank you for acknowledging that and just kind of trying to give your best predictions for the future. But my basic takeaway from tonight's presentation is a year ago, you could never have predicted any of this because there were things that have occurred in the past year that we just didn't know about. And so I'm going to also then, hearing what you've said, we also can't predict the next year really based on, because we don't really know if some of these things are going to pop up again or not. I understand election year and all that, but we still just don't really know some of these possibilities of what could happen here that may be happening in Chicago or other cities across the country.
I think that's fair. I would say, given that we don't have a federal election, I'm less concerned we're going to have surprises, but we always have somehow, like, the last year has just been surprise after surprise.
So you've done your best to make a prediction, but with 10 unknowns? So I'll take that position.
Like I said, I was less excited to come back this, this year than I was last year because I did miss. And so part of this is convincing me to stop forecasting enrollment for Falls Church, but not just.
Well, I mean, all of this was not based on your work. This is, you know, so many external factors. And that's, I guess, my point again, there's so many external factors that you can't determine today. And so we can take your analysis as it is, but just knowing there's a ton of external factors that are out of our control.
That is the primary reason of incorporating so many caveats at the end of just trying to highlight, there are a lot of unknowns.
Right, okay. Thank you for your work on this.
I just, there is one data point that I think my team has really held on to is declining enrollment is the headline in districts across our region and Falls Church City did not experience that. Like, that is a very, very strong data driver for our team as we try to make sense of what's coming next. Like, that is something that we just can't lose sight of is that those declining enrollment headlines and cuts and closing schools and things that, like, we're not even near that. So I think the swirl that occurred and we were still able to climb some, I just think is, is a remarkably strong data point that we shouldn't miss as we kind of think of going into next year. Again, hard to predict, but I, we're really holding on to that data point as something that is what we're using as we think of projections for next year.
And to Dr. Dade's point and kind of going back to Ms. Silverman's comment, and I told the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce this, I come to Falls Church a lot. I told Letty this, I believe Mayor, Mayor Hardy this, at a housing event over the, in the fall. Northern Virginia is, is different than suburban Maryland in the district. Okay, Northern Virginia, particularly the contractors, and I, I'm not going to give you a number because I don't have it memorized off the top of my head. Northern Virginia is much more heavily weighted in federal contracting dollars towards DoD than the life sciences as compared to like Montgomery County. Montgomery County and Frederick County really pull this down pretty heartily. And if you just listen to what the discussions are from the federal level, it's, you know, epidemiology is not real popular these days, but DoD is. So just given that the makeup of Northern Virginia's economy, it could just kind of flatten out for a year or two and not go negative like we're, like we're really seeing pretty severely across north of the river. So to Dr. Dade's point, like Falls Church could actually kind of just escape flat for a little bit.
That makes sense. It's a good point, Dr. Dade. Good reminder. Thanks, Dr. Waters. Other questions, comments for Dr. Waters? Ms. Tice?
Thank you so much and definitely, you know, don't beat yourself up over missing the mark. There's so many unknowns and also you don't have to apologize for droning. I'm such a nerd. I was like completely glued the whole time. So thank you. My questions were, one, when we were looking at the numbers this fall as they were coming in and we took a moment to look back at where we ended the year in June, it didn't seem as shocking. And I guess I'm wondering what your advice would be in, as we look towards, is this number, this 2,745 number is the projection for the start of the school year, correct?
For next year.
Right. So what advice would you have for us when we're looking at end of year data? I guess my point is we should have maybe realized in June we weren't going to have a ginormous climb because we were not, we, our numbers were not as high as projected in June. So we should have maybe seen it coming a little earlier than we did, that we weren't going to meet that mark and have a ginormous jump in the summer. So what would your advice be for us in the spring as we're, as we're ending our budget cycle, looking towards planning for next year on the likelihood of us meeting this number?
I mean, I think you'll have a pretty good idea by March. This is why I spent so much time on this, is like, you had about 40 kids and this is from, from the start of the year to the end of the year and then potentially another 50 over summer. This number, I'm kind of like, it's, it's, I mean, this is a little bit more based on the monthly stuff. That's a good question, to be frank with you. I would, I would probably look, I would probably look at the force, probably go back to the housing data. If we're seeing still weakening, if you're seeing, wherever you're at in March, April, May, as those numbers come in, if we compare them up with the housing data and say the housing market has stopped weakening, then we can be a little bit more sure about it being flat. So I would kind of just look to see where year-over-year price changes are, how much inventory is building, vacancy rates, and I'd be happy to send Alicia and Dr. Dade those numbers for you all. But I would just look to see kind of how, how the housing market is going, because that's going to be the, that's like, and I mean, that's, to be frank with you, I mean, apart from the federal layoff or from the deferred retirements, layoffs, whatever it is, I'm curious to see on what happens in the spring because I could see it, I can very easily play a scenario in my head where you're a federal employee, you take a deferred retirement package, but you're like, well, I'll put my house on, I'll clean it up over the winter and then I'll sell it in the spring. Very curious to see what this spring selling season looks like. And because we have zero data, I, you know, I haven't delved into it, but I'm, I would be looking at the housing data.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. And when you were, when you were saying an average of this, over the summer, I think you were saying it's not unusual to get about 40 kids over the summer, right? Is that what, that number you had said? So, so you would, we would expect to be at 2,700 still at the end of the year if we're, you know, things are normal, which nothing's normal, but yeah.
Right, yeah. I could, I mean, this is a conservative estimate, which is going back to Mr. Anderson's question about like the error bars on it. I'm still nervous I'm going to miss on the high end and it's going to come in way high. So, but that's, I'm here, so it's okay.
That's okay. I, I know that this is hard work. My last question is when you mentioning vacancy rates, and I, I guess what my, can't wrap my brain around is the, I know we have capacity for more kids in our system, but we don't have massive amounts of vacancy in our housing stock. Is that correct? So is it just that our housing is full of people with fewer kids, not that we have housing that is a significant number of percentage of housing that's vacant?
Yeah, so the generate, that's what the generation rates kind of show is that, that's the number of kids coming out of the number of households, which takes into account, or I've been, I started taking into account the number of housing units, vacant housing units. And so, so that's the, like, if you look at the apartment slash condo number, what you'll see is in like 2017, it was at 2.58, 2015, it was at 2.66. When you see it come down, that's saying that fewer kids are coming out of, out of those units.
Right, right. That makes sense. But we don't, but in terms of, the, the housing is full, it's just full of fewer kids?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, that was kind of the comment about these like pied-à-terres, you know, and I mean, I can tell you all sorts of stories. I mean, if we think about apartments and condos, with the federal workers, I mean, another thing that I didn't even mention, I got a lot of random side stories on all this, and actually two that are worth mentioning around this, there's also returned office mandates, right? If you moved out to Stafford County and you got your kid enrolled in, in school in Stafford, you, you might not want to uproot them, but if you have to be in the office a couple days a week and you're like, you know, maybe I'll rent an apartment for a little bit, that would pull a unit off the, you know, that would pull a unit out, out of like the student generating ones and like the kid is in Stafford and they're just sleeping there a couple nights a week because they have to be back in the office. Also on the federal job losses, this is something, this is a pure pontification. I would be in some ways curious how teacher turnover and attrition compares this year to previous years. Because if this year you have, you know, it could be, basically it could be the scenario where you have a household with one federal employee and one teacher or one federal contractor and one teacher. Well, if the federal employee or contractor loses their job, they may not decide to stay here on a teacher salary. So they may leave. So I'm actually curious to see if teacher attrition goes up this year as opposed to previous years. So that's just something for you guys to think about. I don't know how it's going to play out, but.
That's a good reminder, too. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your time.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Waters? Ms. Anderson?
I have a clarifying question following one Ms. Tice had asked back on that generation data page. And I know you gave us more data specifically for our housing buildings or apartment buildings. Yeah, so that, .177 apartment condos that have gone down, that, if I'm reading that correctly, that means for every hundred apartments, there are 17, 18 students coming out of them?
Yeah.
Right. But we have more apartments than we had five years ago.
Yes.
So overall, are we having more students from the apartments, just less, more total number of human being students coming from apartment buildings than we did in the past? Just fewer per unit? Or am I?
I am, yeah, I'm confusing two charts in my head that I made. I threw a lot of charts at you guys, so I was trying to limit this. There were more kids coming out of condos and apartments, specifically the apartments. So yes, there's more kids coming out of apartments, but then there's fewer of them. So you have these competing forces of rising vacancy, fewer kids coming out of the units that are occupied, but then there's just more, which makes this whole thing kind of, yes. So there's more, there, I believe there were more kids coming out of apartments and condos and specifically the stuff that's newer. Something that jumped out at me was there was a notable drop in the students coming out of Falls Green apartment. And so that is one of your older apartments, but the newer apartments have been seeing a rise in students. So there seems to be, I can't tell if it's kids aging out of the apartments, the data are not that granular for it. are not that granular for it. If it's kids aging out, and then there's just, you know, the people that are staying there continue to stay, or if there's a substitution effect where when the new apartments come on, they move to the new apartments. So there's a bunch of competing forces, but there was a slight rise, I believe, in the number of kids coming out of apartments.
And so I'm looking at another one of the charts that you, that was in board docs. It's not in this deck. And it looks like, even with that, because that, that has the numbers, I think, you were talking about, like the green, purple, and orange bars. But even with that, the percentage of students and the total number of students coming out of single-family homes is holding remarkably stable. Right? We're not, it's not significantly shifting the.
It dropped by 30. That was the one.
30 people, not 30 points.
30 students. Yeah, 30 students. Yeah. So, single-family, that is, that's a pretty large drop this year in the number of kids getting pulled out of single-family, which, and this is pure pontification, leads me to believe that it is international students who may relate, their parents might, and this is pure pontification, might have been like, well, let's go to Europe for a year and see how things shake out, you know? So.
Right. Any other questions or comments? All right, Dr. Waters, appreciate as always. Look forward to seeing you. You're coming to the December meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. That sounds good. And just know that I think Ms. Prince is going to have a clawback in her, your future contracts if you're off. So she's tough, so just be ready. So, yeah. All right. Thanks, Dr. Waters. All right. All right. Good, good presentation. I know that's on the minds of, of many of us. But yeah, I think Dr. Dade, I think, had a great point about the, probably the, the main data point we got to keep in mind is about, given all the enrollment drops around the area, I think it's impressive that Falls Church City continues to have its schools lead the way in terms of having people come here, especially given our international change in population, which is probably very stagnant, and we still have the same numbers. So that's, that's a good, thanks, Dr. Dade, for that reminder. All right, we're going to now go to Ms. Minson for a couple items. We're going to start off with the Dominion Energy Electric School Bus Charging Infrastructure Program Agreement.
Thank you, and good evening. Before the board this evening is the EV Charging Infrastructure Program Agreement that was reviewed by the board at the October work session. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this proposed agreement, but as a quick refresher, this allows the infrastructure to charge the additional bus, that the, the additional electric bus that the school board has at Sixth Charging Station.
Thanks, Ms. Minson. Any, any questions that were different from the October meeting about this agreement? Are we ready to? I think we are ready. All right. So I need a recommended action, please. Ms. Sherwood.
I move that the school board authorize the school board chair to sign the Dominion Energy Electric School Bus Charging Infrastructure Program Agreement between the Falls Church City School Board, the City of Falls Church, and the Virginia Electric and Power Company as presented. Subject to changes approved by the superintendent that do not materially adversely affect the school board's position.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thanks, Ms. Minson. Now, second reading and adoption of policies. Back to you.
Great. We knew today would be a long meeting, so we only have two policies for second reading this evening. The first is policy DJF purchasing procedures. This had previously been adopted by the board, and there were proposed changes from the VSB that were incorporated in first reading. There were no proposed changes from first reading, so this DJF looks the same as it did when the board reviews, reviewed it last month. I'd be happy to answer question, any questions regarding policy DJF purchasing procedures?
None?
Seeing none. The second policy for second reading this evening is policy IA, instructional goals and objectives, like policy DJF. There were no proposed changes. This was a policy that the board had previously adopted, so it's not replacing a numbered policy, but it is updating the language to this policy to get up to date with the Virginia Code. Happy to answer any questions regarding policy IA. Seeing none. Those are the policies for this evening. There was a policy that we took off at the last minute, JGDA, disciplining students with disabilities. We wanted to get a little bit more input from the SPIAT Committee on that, and so we're hoping to bring that back in December, January, but that will be on for second reading in the coming meetings. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Minson, and thanks for the SPIAT Committee to, to engage with the policies. It's great. So we're going to need a recommended action for 5.03. Ms. Mur, Ms. Murphy. I always miss you, so I was just going to call on you, make sure.
I recommend that the school board approve the second reading and adoption of policy DJF purchasing procedures and Policy Act, and Policy IA, instructional goals and objectives.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Henderson. All in favor, say yes. Any opposed? All right. Thank you all. Thanks, Ms. Minson, for all the policy work, as always. Now we'll move on to Mr. Finneran, who is, has been patiently waiting to be let in. Please don't take it personally that we did not let you in for the last hour, but you are going to help review the draft legislative program. So, Mr. Finneran, do you want to take it from here? I think you're on mute, possibly. Still nothing? Oh, now say something? Nope. I think Dr. Bates is a lip reader. Can he not? Nope, he's not here. No, he's, yeah, I'm sorry. We have like one more minute. Ms. Finneran, we're just trying to see if it's on our side or your side. So, let's see. John, we're going to keep moving. Mr. Finneran, if you can hear us, we're going to keep moving, but we're, we'll be ready to, to pull you in in just a bit. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the future agenda topics. 6.01, Dr. Dade.
Thank you. So as Ms. Sherwood stated, we have an exciting celebration and recognition of the naming of our band room coming up at our next meeting. We will also be welcoming our new school board member coming up. And then really, all things budget. So the budget train is moving forward quickly. Next meeting will be answering some questions from the board with regards to one-time funding that still remain, and hopefully getting approval from the board from there. And then we have our first budget work session to round out the end of the year. So those are our primary upcoming agenda topics.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Dade. Yeah, that's, as a note for the public, we are moving our, our budget timeline forward, so we're going to get, get more into that in December. So that's, that's definitely an earlier timeline, which is exciting. So, all right. And then Dr. Dade did cede his time for the superintendent's report.
But I have two quick ones.
But he took it back.
Yes, I apologize. So, thank you, Mr. Gould. So just two quick ones. I wanted to send a shout-out. Thanks. I would organize a parade if I could. I was told about how great our Education Foundation is prior to my arrival, and they have lived up to every bit of the fanfare. They were able to kind of rally during our shutdown to make sure that we're providing both families and staff members with gift cards over the past few weeks. Over 6,000 of unexpected funding from the Education Foundation during this time of need. In addition, they've kind of broadened their window of holiday giving and assistance support for families, expanding kind of beyond the December timeframe. So really focusing on food for the Thanksgiving holiday, and then target gift cards and things of that nature for the December holiday season. So just can't thank the Education Foundation enough. In addition to approving, I can't even remember how many hundreds of, you were with me, Mr. Gould, 100, probably $120,000 worth of funding directly to our teachers and students in the classroom, professional development support for teachers. So I won't steal their thunder with the, with the official announcement, but they are just absolutely phenomenal asset for our community. And then, on a Saturday note, this is our last meeting with Dr. Wright. So I just wanted to, one, thank him for his tremendous support during my transition. Before day one, he was able to really steer me in the right, right direction for answering the right, asking the right questions, getting the information that I needed, and really being a, a great thought partner for me in my transition. And then I know our schools are going to miss him dearly as their direct support. Someone said in his farewell that, you know, one of the principals, like, Dr. Wright, for sure, made me a better principal. So, thank you, Dr. Wright, on behalf of our, our school division. We are going to miss you, and you're right down the road, so we expect frequent return visits from you.
Indeed, yeah. Both, great updates. Thank you, Dr. Dade, especially by the foundation. That was a great meeting last night, and all the excitement of, innovation of our teachers. And Dr. Wright, yeah, we are definitely going to miss having you here. I know you're making us call you superintendent right now, so we are trying to make that transition our heads, but we're glad that you're nearby. And we, yeah, we look forward to, to seeing all your success as well. So, thank you, Dr. Wright. All right. Okay, sounds good. We'll keep moving then. We're going to go to our board, and student liaison updates. We will start with Mr. Anderson.
So I have just a couple of updates. I attended the Advanced Academics Advisory Committee earlier this month, and they are still continuing their work on developing guidelines around 2E identification, as well as kind of curriculum development around those, that student population. I, I, and I assume all of our other board liaisons to committees are tasking the committees to think about how AI might affect their populations of interest. And so we will be discussing that in, in future, in future meetings. Then I was able to attend only a little bit of the Wreckin' Parks meeting due to childcare issues, but they had a very successful engagement with the community over at Cavalier Trail Park. So, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Henderson?
The BIE meeting is Thursday morning, so I'll be attending that from Williamsburg. PTAs are continuing to do great work in the schools. There've been a number of events happening in and around PTAs, so if you're not a member of your school building PTA, I encourage you to join it.
Ms. Silver?
Yes, I, unfortunately, I had to miss Health and Wellness last time because it overlapped with office hours, but I did attend office hours with Ms. Sherwood, and we had some guests from the community and from the, from teachers and staff from the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Ms. Tice?
Great, thank you. I, I guess what I do on Friday mornings is go to legislative breakfast, because the last two Fridays, that's what I did. Two Fridays ago, we went to the, the more local region legislative breakfast with Arlington and Alexandria, which is always a really nice event to connect with our closest neighbors and share some of our legislative priorities and share ideas. And then the following Friday, we had the Public School Leaders Network Legislative Breakfast, which is a larger regional gathering of S.Aid-ish local school districts. And that was another opportunity to share priorities and ideas for our legislative packets, and there were some legislators and their staffs there, which was really, really led to a very robust conversation, and appreciated both of them.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Sherwood?
Thank you. Last night, I was at the ESOL Advisory Committee meeting, where we did kick off our discussion about how AI policy will, or the upcoming AI policy, how that will affect ESOL populations. So we're in process of that discussion. Number of agenda items reviewing some events like the back-to-school night at Secondary Campus, participation in the college fair, and ideas about further engaging our ESOL students, as well as some discussion about the various school action plans and their goals involving ESOL. And then there was also discussion about the upcoming Thanksgiving dinner being held by welcoming Falls Church, so I want to put a sort of a public plug out about that as well. That's coming up next Monday, November 24th, and all are invited to attend, and it sounds like a really nice way of building community. So wanted to share that as well. In terms of boosters updates, the athletic boosters are having the, the Fall Sports Banquet also next Monday night, November 24th, 7 to 9 p.m. in the Meridian Auditorium. Band boosters have music days going on right now, which is where band students help with various tasks that community members might need help with in an effort to fundraise for their upcoming trip. Winter band concerts are coming up, I believe, December 3rd at Oak Street, and I think December 6th, Secondary Campus. There's also a Soul's Outpost Band Event on December 1st. And Choral Boosters have their winter concerts coming up December 3rd at Oak Street as well, so it's a dual-band choral concert. And I believe December 4th for Secondary Campus, and if you ordered a point seta through Choral Boosters, don't forget to pick that up before or after the December 4th concert. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Ms. Murphy?
I had the pleasure of attending the SPIAT Committee meeting since the last meeting that we had, and we met at Jesse Thackeray Preschool, which is always nice, because we get to sit on the little chairs. So I suppose it's nice, depending on your perspective. Some probably don't think it's so nice. The director's report was given by Allison Clink. She had a lot of exciting things to talk about. We were all very excited to hear what she had to say. We, on the agenda, we discussed the, the committee discussed the pros and cons of maintaining bylaws. The, there, there is a discussion ongoing about whether or not bylaws are necessary for the committee, or if they're duplicative of the newly passed school board policy regarding committees. That discussion is ongoing. We also had a bit of time to discuss policy JGBA, which is the school board policy that's under revision regarding discipline of students with disabilities. Given the weight of that policy, the discussion is going to continue into the December meeting. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. And again, thank you for the connection of our advisory committee with the policy process. That's a great example case study of how we really rely on our community. So thanks for your leadership on that. For me, budget finance, went to the budget finance, the Falls Church Education Foundation meeting with Dr. Dade, which is always great and exciting. I did our final office hours with Vice Chair Tice, and we had a, a great member come and talk about our lead policy, especially for elected officials, and then did other things. So finally, our National Merit Scholar update is Aiden Harper.
First and foremost, fall sports seem to never end around here. We've had some superb postseason runs from the J football team and the varsity girls volleyball teams. And pretty important, the Meridian High School musical, Rock of Ages, coming up this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. They're always a lot of fun to go watch, so go see them.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Harper. Appreciate it as always. Ms. Harper, do we, we have an ice hockey team? Did I hear about this? Is there an ice?
I have heard rumors. I'm not totally sure if this is happening for the winter season. I have not seen that much, but I have heard that it may be a thing.
Okay, all right. That's, yeah, I would love to hear how they're doing as well. So, all right. Well, thanks, Mr. Harper. Appreciate it. Now we are going to the approval of minutes. So we will look at approval of minutes. I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to approve the minutes of October 28th, 2025, October 7th, 2025, June 24th, 2025, September 10th, 2024, and August 13th, 2024. Do I have unanimous consent from the board? Great. And Ms. Jones said she's going to sneak in at 2023 pretty soon, so that is exciting. Great. And Ms. Jones said she's going to sneak in a 2023 pretty soon, so that is exciting. So, all right. So with that, there is no more stalling unless Mr. Finneran wants to wait until after our close. But we're going to, Mr. Brett, we're going to reschedule that? Is that, is that? Okay, all right. So we'll reschedule the legislative session for a future topic, or a future session. Thank you. All right, we're now going to, that ends our public comment, our public period, or just public part of the agenda, not the public comment. We're going to move right to close. Can I please have a motion for closed? Ms. Henderson?
All right, so Falls Church City. Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignment, staff resignation, staff retirement, staff performance, staff change in position, childcare leave, long-term medical leave, leave of absence, and advisory committee appointments and resignation. Student matters under section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, the discipline of a student, student matters under section 3 point, sorry, 2.2-3711A2, in particular, student part-time enrollment under policy 9.19, part-time enrollment of resident. Legal matters under section 2.2-3711AB, in particular, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel and personnel under section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, performance of superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Chair, Vice Chair Tice. All in favor say yes? Any opposed? All right, given the length of it, I thought some of you would oppose us. All right, so Dr. Dade, we're going to meet. This is going to be a big one. So if you're going to tune in, we'll see you later. So yeah, hour, is that our estimate? Do we even have an estimate? Are we going to do a Dr. Waters and try to? Shooting for an hour. That's our goal. So, all right. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Mr. Harper. Appreciate it.